Liza. I will call to order a regular meeting of the Wellington Board of Selectmen. Today's Monday, June 7th at 2:00 21, 6:30. The first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you'll all join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Flag of the United.
Needs of America. And to the republic for which it stands.
One.
One nation.
Under God.
Liberty and justice for all. All right. Thank you. Little bit of a delay there. We'll get it down. All right, the next item on the agenda is approval of minutes. We should have, you should have two sets of minutes in your packet. Regular meeting of May 17th and then the special meeting on May 24th. I will make a motion to approve the minutes of May 17th as written.
I'll second.
Second by John, any discussion? Seeing none, I will call for a vote.
Blessington.
Aye.
Writz.
Aye.
Wyszynski.
Aye. Motion carries. The next minutes are May 24th. I want to go ahead, John.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of May 24th as submitted.
I'll second. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, I will call for a vote.
Blessington.
Aye.
Writz.
Aye.
Wyszynski.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item is present to speak. If you are on the call and would like to speak, I ask that you state your name for the record and limit yourself to two minutes. You should have the ability to unmute yourself. If you're having difficulty, raise your hand and we'll see if we can't help you. Is there anyone present to speak? If not, you have an opportunity at the end of the meeting to do so.
Can anybody hear me?
Oh, yes, we can.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, Ms. Wyszynski. This is Cheryl Mitchell at 61 Penny Hill Road. And I just wanted to bring to the town's attention, I'm not too sure that there's anything that can be done. For better or worse, I am a part of the Wellington Friends and Neighbors Group. And it's good to know that I'm not the only one having this issue. There is a group of kids riding around on quads. Some of them have five to six kids per quad. They're riding shirtless, they're riding barefoot. And I know myself, I have almost hit one of the quads. It's been happening down on Old Farms, it's been happening on Daleville, it's happening around Penny Hill. So I just wanted to bring it to the town's attention. Like I said, I'm not sure that there's anything legally that can be done. I just wanted everybody aware of what's happening.
Thank you. Again, we don't normally conduct business here. But Ms. Mitchell, I may, my office may contact you to give a little more details if we can, you know, maybe have our liaison troops see, look into matter. Certainly, safety is a concern, not only for those on the road, but those actually doing the riding. So thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else present to speak? Again, there'll be an opportunity at the end of the meeting to speak. Our next item is correspondence. You should both have a copy of the correspondence list. It's available in the selectmen's office. Any comments or concerns on the correspondence list? Move forward to selectmen's update. Steve Grant, we're still waiting on the contract for the Septic at the Old Town Hall. School Building Committee did not meet since our last meeting. The next meeting is next Wednesday, June 16th, where the Deputy Secretary of DAS, Costas Diamantis, will participate in a question and answer with the School Building Committee and members of the public. So the agenda should be going out in the next day or so. And so you can look for the link to that meeting on the website. The lots of grant, we're still waiting for final review from DOT. It looks like we may be able to take the project farther into our original area, which encompassed the Mills to Hall School. So it looks like we may be able to get that done because of some changes that were made with projects DOT already had scheduled for that area. So fingers crossed, we'll be able to take care of the entire project. Again, that was in our first conception and hopefully the dollars will go forth. So I'll keep you posted. Staffing, we had to, an opening left in Public Works. And we hired a laborer and a position was filled from within by Jason Rigizi, who was formerly at the transfer station as an assistant transfer station operator. And then was the Public Works Administrative Assistant. So now Jason is a full-time laborer with Public Works. So we welcome him into his new role up there. And that created an opening for the Public Works Administrative Assistant. And that has actually been filled by Michelle Seer, who is currently the Assistant Revenue Collector here in the Town Office Building. So now she was working part-time in that role and she'll continue there and part-time with Public Works. So we're excited to see them both in their new positions. The lights at River Road, they've all been installed. I know they're working on some issues with the timing, the lights, the timing of the lights around the basketball court seemed to be going well. And I know they're just making some final adjustments around the play scape and the volleyball court. And so if you're down there in the evenings, you should, the sun goes down, you should be able to stick around a little bit longer and play some basketball. So we're looking forward to that project being fully complete. Any other questions on selectmen's report? Public Works. Public Works has been continuing to work on sweeping. And I'm happy to say they're all done sweeping. As we're in the middle of our first heatwave, I feel confident that we'll be no more sand or salt put down on the roads this season. They've been working on roadside mowing around town. They had to do some tree cleanup after that quick storm we had last Wednesday or two Wednesdays ago. Today, they were able to burn the brush pile at the transfer station. They've been picking up the trash at the park twice a week now on Mondays and Thursdays. They did mowing around sightlines, the senior center, the pump house. And unfortunately, we had to pick up a truckload of junk and about 30 tires that were dumped up behind the bus lot on town property. So a little disconcerting. So remind residents that you can take these items to the transfer station. You should by no means be dumping your trash and goods on the side of the road in our town or any other town. I mean, if anyone needed some assistance, just contact Public Works, we'll see how we can help you. But dumping them on someone's property is not the best way to go. All right. Any questions about Public Works? All right, moving on. New business. So the first item was a concern regarding Wellington Health Fire Department. I will say that our office, along with land use, received a letter from a citizen with concerns regarding the use of the property at 25 Old Farms Road. I have yet to fully vet the issues raised. I'd like a chance to really look into the concerns and determine what, if any, role the Board of Selectmen might have in the matter. Selectman Blessington, you asked for this item to be put on the agenda. Did you have something specific you wanted to?
Well, I wanted to make sure the issue was investigated. And I think you've only had a couple of days, so it hasn't been time for that. But I think we could carry this over to the next, to the next meeting. By then, we should have been able to determine whatever we need to determine.
Okay. All right, and again, there may or may not be a matter that needs to come before the Board of Selectmen that has yet to be determined. Again, there was some concerns over the usage of the property. And so we need to really look into all of the information before there's any action. So I don't see any action for this board. Again, John, you would wanted this on the agenda. So if you're good with us just looking into the issue to determine what, if anything, needs to be done, we'll move forward in that manner.
Okay.
Liza? Anything?
I think that makes sense, given what we read in the letter and, you know, what we do and don't know at the moment. So I think if we had any kind of conversation right now, it would be very premature and without all the information on, you know, there's lots of claims. So I think it's incumbent upon us before we engage in conversation to figure out what amongst those are valid concerns. And of those, what actually belongs with this board? Because it may not be anything, but we will, I think, have to look and see.
All right, seeing no other discussion on that matter, I will move on to tax refunds. We'll move to refund Michael A. Mitchell a certificate of correction in the amount of $108.72.
I'll second.
Seconded by John. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, I will call for a vote.
Blessington.
Aye.
Writz.
Aye.
Wyszynski.
Aye. Motion carries. Right, the next item is TOB reconfiguration. All right, so this is not the first time this topic has come up before this board or even within the First Selectmen's Office. There's always been a lack of solid usable space here in the Town Office Building. The configuration is not, not the best, I will say. So again, for years, there've been discussions on the best way to use the space we have. COVID has brought the discussion up once again. In many areas, there's not enough physical space and certainly not enough space to separate folks if we needed to because of COVID. Or this makes us think of future COVID-like concerns. So I started to rethink the use of space specifically, well, kidding, in every office. There's lots of discussions about where we can move everybody to make it best suitable for not just our staff, but for residents when they come into this building. So what I'm looking at currently is rethinking the use of space in the human services and parks and rec area. If you've ever been down in that area, it's a hallway with some storage space, a closet, a single restroom and closet space on the other side. It opens up into one large office with a closed-door office to the side. That is meant to be used for four individuals. There's really not enough space for four people, certainly not in conducive working conditions. So we started to think about what that would look like. Each department has a director and a part-time assistant. Although the parks and rec position is vacant now, we look to fill that in the very near future. And so there's also a need for assistance with our senior population. And that's really come to light during the pandemic. The town does not have senior center staff. They have currently a volunteer that runs the senior center. And we are very thankful for all that she does over there. It's a tremendous amount of work. And this change I'm proposing is the possibility of moving the Human Services Office from the Town Office Building to the Senior Center. We have a much larger population there between Button Hill and Wellington Woods with a very active senior community. They have space. They definitely have some storage. There's a lack of storage here. I did reach out to, firstly, spoke with Jenny to get her input and feedback. And Jenny is on the phone with us. We had a meeting with the Senior Center Executive Board. I wanted to gauge their interest and where they stood in your communications. You saw a letter from a member of that board in favor of this potential move. So the Senior Center Executive Committee was on board with that. I think they liked the idea of having someone there that could answer questions. It wouldn't just be for seniors, though. And we did have that conversation with them. If the Human Services Department was moved over there, there would be an influx of individuals from the community. And they were actually open to that. I think it would highlight our senior center. It would encourage those that are maybe getting close to the age to join the senior center and give them a little insight into what we offer over there. And so I wanted to see what this board thought and get some feedback on that. There would be some potential IT and phone implications. One being, after speaking with IT, they see it as doable so that then Jenny could communicate with our server here. But it would probably necessitate sooner rather than later, new hardware, which we were already looking at. The potential use for some of our COVID funds to make some upgrades to computers around the Town Office Building in the event people needed to suddenly work from home again. We hope that it doesn't happen, but it certainly brought it to our attention. And so that's probably the biggest cost implication. Otherwise, it would be picking up Jenny's desk and belongings and moving them over there. Jenny, feel free to unmute and comment if you'd like. The food pantry would still stay here in this building. As of right now, we don't see moving that over there, space for that, what that would look like. So volunteers would still work here out of the main common room upstairs. And then Jenny's larger events would happen still here. Jenny, do you want to comment on anything before I ask the board for their comments?
I just think that it's worth mentioning that ever since we've gotten Button Hill, now we have these new apartments. So there's more people over there and people are, you know, looking for services. And a lot of the folks over there don't have the transportation, just to make it quarter of a mile down the road, nor do they have the mobility to walk it. You know, with my department being over in the senior center, it would create ease of access for people who really need the services this department offers.
Liza and John, your thoughts, feedback, concerns? John?
Just one thought, would it maybe make a little more sense to have Jenny and her office over there? And then you have one, you know, kind of split offices so that you could have somebody at the Town Office Building all the time?
So you think we'll move Jenny over there, but leave somebody here in the?
You have an assistant, right, Jenny?
Yes, I do.
And on average, she's 10 hours a week, is that correct?
Eight hours a week.
Eight hours a week, John. So that doesn't leave somebody here all the time. They would, you know, be in that location. You know, again.
All the reason I said, it sounds good now. And I know that once we've done this, then there's going to start to be complaints from the residents over at the senior center that we have too many people coming here and all that. It's fine with me, but that was just something to think about.
John, that's a concern I addressed specifically with the Executive Committee at the Senior Center was, you know, I know they like their space and they like it to be used for senior activities. And so what I made very clear was that Jenny's Department services all of Wellington. And the senior center was just one aspect of that. And they seemed really, again, at this time, and I know they were going to take the discussion to their larger membership. Jenny, maybe you can touch on that, it was not at that meeting. That, you know, they were in favor, that Executive Committee was in favor of that, even though that meant bringing other individuals into the senior center.
I think that it's also worth mentioning that last week on Thursday and Friday, I was at the senior center from, oh, probably 8:30 to 2 o'clock both days, doing renters rebate. And every year I do this and I go there and I meet with people and I help them with their applications. But it's also a good opportunity for me to really touch base with everybody over there. And it, word had spread that I possibly might be moving over there. And the general consensus from everybody was, this is wonderful, we can't wait, this would be great. You know, I think that it's really nice to have that kind of welcome. And I think that it would benefit everybody, not just the senior community, not just this department, but it would also benefit everybody because then it would create a more conducive environment for my coworkers to conduct their jobs.
Yeah, and John, I think unless we were looking to expand the department to include an employee at the senior center, which many towns do, they have someone who works solely at their senior center, running those sorts of activities and doing the things of the volunteer individual here does, that I just don't know that it's realistic to have someone in two different areas. And I'm not sure right now from a need or financial aspect that we're ready to expand that department in that manner. So short of that, I think it would be best to leave the department in one location. And this would, you know, allow, it doesn't, you know, we can test this out and see how things go. There was really, Jenny, were you at the larger meeting they had?
I was not. I was told that only the Executive Committee showed up.
Okay. So the, although the Executive Committee meeting was the first meeting they had in person. And so, you know, we were there in person, but I'm not sure everyone's ready to come back and meet in person just yet. So certainly, this isn't something I'm looking to do tomorrow. I want to get more input and feedback from that larger group. Liza, did you have any?
No, I really, I don't see really any downsides. I think it sounds like it's something both, you know, the professional staff and the community that, you know, would be welcoming her, are interested in making this change. We already know that our spaces in the Town Office Building are fairly limited. And being able to lighten that load a little bit, as well as having more face time with the community that needs more face time, is a benefit. So I have no concerns about this move whatsoever.
In the food distribution methods that Jenny's using now and the food share items would still be done out of this building because, right, you know, right now, the food pantry is housed here. So she would come here for a couple of those events and still do that. And the flow here works really well. We really got it down to pretty good science around here. So those things, at least right now, from the conversations Jenny and I have, we're not looking to move. But if there were a means to alter that in the future, we'd certainly have that discussion.
I mean, I don't have any objection to this. I just thought that, well, like food distribution was another thought that I had in mind. I'm sure that's been taken. So yes, whatever, whatever we want to do here, I think Jenny, Jenny can figure it out.
Yes, thank you, John. I know you just want to ease the transition, I appreciate it.
Yeah, and that's going to take a lot of communication out of Jenny's department and out of this office to make people aware of, you know, where those services can be found now. One of the IT implications I thought would be a little bit more complex, and they are not. IT might suggest otherwise, but relatively easy to do. The phone is another situation. We'd have to talk about whether or not we could roll over the existing number she has. But there's just one landline there. The senior center is not part of our phone system. So we really would have to look at what that looks like. And, and, you know, we're also trying to gauge what it would mean for potential increase in any utilities at the senior center so that, you know, we could plan for that. So again, it's not something that's going to happen as a result of the discussion at this meeting. But I wanted to bring you on board, since we've been having these discussions for a couple of months now. And it's looking like this is probably going to be a good move for us. And so I want to really continue the conversation with the seniors and to make sure they're all on board. And right now, the support has really been there. If, you know, between now and our next meeting or quite frankly, anytime, John or Liza, if you have any concerns or things we may not have thought of, please reach out to either to Jenny or to Heather. And we'll see if we can't address them if we've already talked about them or see as we move forward with the plan. All right. Thank you, thank you, Jenny. All right, the next item on our agenda is the Eastern Highlands Health District Board of Directors' appointment. So I had been previously appointed to fill a vacancy on that board. And unfortunately, my term expired on May 30th of this year. So I would like to be reappointed if this board chooses to do so. I think it's important that we have a voice. If nothing else, this pandemic showed us how important our health districts are in sharing information, certainly with the vaccine rollout in the manner which had to be done widespread and quickly this year. We actually have two open Board of Director seats over there. It's been quite a long time since both have been filled. So if I am renewed by appointment, we would still have an open position on the Board of Directors. And so I encourage anyone who thinks they might be interested to come forward.
And what's, what's the expiration date?
The new term, I would ask to be retroactive to May 30th, 2021, and expiring May 29th, 2024. That would be a new full term.
Okay, so I would make a motion that the Board appoint Erica Wyszynski to the Board of Directors for the effective retroactive limit from May 30th, 2021 to May 29th, 2024.
Second.
Right, motion by John, seconded by Liza, any discussion?
Blessington.
Aye.
Writz. Wyszynski.
Aye. Thank you. And look forward to continuing. And again, if anyone listening to this meeting or then watching this meeting is interested in serving on the Eastern Highlands Health District Board of Directors, but you're not really sure what that means, you can give our office a call or reach out to the Town Clerk's Office. All right, old business, COVID-19 update. All right, let's start with two things. One, this will be my regular, last regular COVID-19 update. Moving forward, we'll put pertinent information that we need to share into the selectmen's report. But I think we've reached a place where every, two, couple of weeks, I might not have such information to report to you. So we're definitely in the upswing. Our cumulative COVID data for Wellington is 259 COVID positive cases with 22 probable cases. And then, once again, zero new deaths. Again, cumulatively, Wellington lost three residents to COVID-19-related illnesses. So it's a slight increase from our last meeting on May 17th. I'm happy to report that Wellington, along with the majority of the state, is no longer in any of the heightened alert levels. There are a couple of places scattered about in yellow or one in orange that the rest of the state has minimal cases. And you'll see, I believe today's report, there's no regular press conference from the Governor's Office, but they did release the information, we're at a 0.55% positivity rate. So our numbers are incredibly low, which is, it's good to hear. I think, you know, we're definitely moving in the right direction. Today, the Town Office Building officially reopened our doors. We unlocked the doors at 12:30 and we've had residents in, in and out, not as many as normal, but still, we're happy to see folks come in. Still encouraging, if you can do your business online over the phone via email to do so. Otherwise, you can call to make an appointment, a specific appointment, or you can now come in. We are asking, at least at this time, that masks be worn or requiring masks in the building. So if you visit us, there's signage speaking to that. And we'll see, we'll monitor that. I know, John, you asked about that at one point. We'll monitor that. And I, my thought process, if things stay the way they are, probably within a couple of weeks. But I'm thinking maybe by the 1st of July, we might be able to move away from that and follow the rest of the guidance. So I continue to be encouraged. Residents 12, eight, 12 years of age and up are eligible to receive the COVID vaccine, COVID-19.
Residents 12, eight, 12 years of age and up are eligible to receive the COVID vaccine, COVID-19 vaccine. As of June 2nd, 53.75% of our residents have received their first dose and 46.62% of our residents have received both doses and are fully vaccinated. So once again, I'll encourage residents 12 years of age to consider being vaccinated and to get to both the first and second dose vaccine, unless of course you're receiving the Johnson and Johnson, which is just one dose. ARPA funds, the, we have final and definitive numbers on how much money Wellington is receiving. I feel confident in these numbers because as of today, we actually filed the information with OPM to actually receive the funds. So Wellington will receive a total of $1,735,454.24 in two equal distributions of $867,727.11. Those 24 cents, it's going to be very important to us. They'll come in two tranches, one now and one a year from now. And we have until the end of 20, December 31st, 2024 to encumber the funds. And we have until 2026 to spend the funds. So if we had some long-term projects that we were using those funds for, after December of 2024, we would have two years to then actually spend the funds. And this more, as of this morning, OPM said that we should anticipate the dollars within about two weeks. And then, you know, what we move from there is how to spend those funds. So it is just being passed through the state. U.S. Treasury is the agency we'll report to. And their interim final rule for ARPA funds is the guidance we will follow. The state made it clear that they cannot and will not be adding additional guidance as to how to spend the funds. That's important to note. It's a lot of money. It's a lot of money that is meant to help businesses, help residents, help municipalities. And there's a multitude of ways we can use it. Finite reasoning is, it's not easy to say how with specific cases. There is a CCM is put together, an advisory committee that will help municipalities determine if their potential project is eligible. But the term self-policing was used by one seminar we had last week. But while you're self-policing, following the very clear guidance and there are a handful of rules that you have to try to fit your project into. What was clear is that if Treasury determines the usage was not within the rules, that the funds would be recouped. So I think it's important that we take our time, make sure the projects we have fit into the COVID-19 related guidelines. And so we'll look forward to do that. Any COVID-related questions? All right, I'm going to move on to the treasurer position. I, I am going to make a motion that we table this item to our next meeting on, I think it's the 21st of June. Donna and I are still working on some details, but there's been some more pressing matters that we, that have taken our time. So if you would, if there's a second, I'd like to table, I move to table this discussion until our next meeting. Seconded by John, any discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
I, I apologize. Let me go back to COVID for a minute. There is a, I think I mentioned to you all that there was a bill, can I see a mouse, Heather? I can still see you, but I'm going to switch my screen. There's a bill that should be coming for a House vote this week that speaks about remote meetings. And so there's been a lot of discussion back and forth. I think I mentioned to you at one point that I really hope that it wouldn't be mandated, that would include some challenges for small towns, all towns, quite frankly. But right now, the discussion around remote meetings and how they apply, it looks as though the language now will mandate certain boards and commissions to hold remote or hybrid meetings. They include the legislative bodies of the town, but not the town meeting. So town meeting would be in person and our Board of Selectmen's would have to be remote or hybrid. It also includes the Board of Finance or Budget Making Authority, local or regional boards of education, zoning commission, combined planning and zoning commissions, Board of Ethics, Charter Review Revision, Police, Fire Commissions, Inland Wetlands Commissions and Zoning Board of Appeals. If that bill passes, that effective date would be July 1st, 2021. And there's still discussions on how remote meetings could and would move forward. So mandate, it's another unfunded mandate. While I think it's important that we now allow greater access in this time, we see that it's been used. It's certainly a challenge if we want to hold remote hybrid meetings in order to be hybrid. We have to have a place for everyone to gather in a public place and the ability to then either phone in or video conference in that meeting. At this point, with the equipment that is set to be purchased, and we've already purchased that would allow us to do this in one location, not two, which would mean at any given time, in person in this manner, we would only have access to one camera, one way to zoom, if that's the feature we use going forward. So if this goes through, we're going to need to outfit, I would say, excuse me, at least the upstairs meeting room and the downstairs meeting room to allow for multiple meetings at any given time. I think that is a good use of those COVID funds. And it will take some, a little bit of information to get that going. We, we know what we're using now and just putting it into place in a, a smaller room downstairs. So I'll, I'll keep you posted on that. One of the other items on that bill was to allow posting of legal notices on a town's website as opposed to mandating maybe in a newspaper, published in a newspaper. That language has come off of that bill. So we would need to continue to post our legal notices in a newspaper. For now, I don't know if it will come up again in the future. There was also language in the bill as it stood last Thursday or Friday that would require town clerks to have a mechanism by which to take payments for all things electronically. So that would be another cost potentially to the town. So we're looking at what the cost with that. If we can find a service similar to how we collect tax payments, the end user pays the fee as opposed to the town. So if that's a possibility, I know our town clerk is looking at that. So if that language stays in this bill, that will be some, another change that we'll have to look forward to. So keep you posted. I'd like us to go begin with hybrid town meetings. I really, I mean, I'm sorry, hybrid Board of Selectmen's meetings for sure. I would have liked to have done one tonight, but we have a referendum tomorrow. So that meeting room is all set up for a referendum, so that's why I'm still here in this selectmen's conference room. So I'll keep you posted. Again, that bill is set for a vote this week. I assume it will be before the session ends on Wednesday. Forward. All right, so that brings us to item nine, present, oh, I may have my numbers wrong. The last item, which is item 10, present to speak. If there is anyone on the call who would like to speak, you should have the ability to unmute yourself, state your name for the record, and I ask you to limit yourself to two minutes. Anyone want to speak? Speak once. I'm excited to see so many people here. All right, seeing none. The selectmen's office is always available for you to reach out and contact any town. So move on to good and welfare. Referendum, the referendum, budget referendum is tomorrow, Tuesday, June 8th, from 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. It is here at the town office building. We've shared that on social media. Make sure anyone, everyone you know who's a registered voter knows to vote here. There was a sign inadvertently placed at the transfer station yesterday that said Hall School. That was from November, so we have to take that down. But I think a few people may have seen that. So vote is here at the town office building tomorrow from 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. So make sure you come out and have your voice heard on the budget. Mobile food share, Jenny is next Wednesday, is that correct? This Wednesday, the ninth. Okay, so it's two days from now, 11:00 a.m. here at the town office building. Remember, if you can, please continue to support our small businesses and restaurants. There are some openings on boards and commissions. I think I mentioned to you already, the Eastern Highlands Health District Board of Directors. CIP still has a vacancy. Conservation Commission has two alternate spots. EDC has three alternates. The Historic District has one regular and two alternate openings. Inland Wetlands Water Course has two regular and two alternate spots. Planning and Zoning Commission has two alternate openings. The Recreation Commission has one regular opening. If you're interested in participating in any board, town or commission, please consider doing so. There's also, Jenny, do you know how many openings there are in the SAS, substance abuse?
SAS is, um.
It's separate?
It doesn't have a limit. It doesn't have a limit.
So I know they're looking for volunteers to sit on that for the substance use awareness.
Technically called the Local Prevention Council.
There you go. So please, if you, if you're interested, reach out to either the town clerk's office or Jenny, Jenny's Human Services Office specifically and see if we can't get some participation. That's, oh, no, that's my hint. Sorry, that was hammering. All right. I want to, let's see, we meet on the 21st. I think school might be over. So I want to say congratulations to all of our fourth graders who are moving on from their time at center school, moving to Hall School next year, and our eighth graders who, after many, many years, will be heading off to E.O. Smith and other high schools of their choosing. We certainly will miss you here, but can't wait to see what things you accomplish in high school. And congratulations to all of our high school seniors who will be graduating. Certainly, the last year and a half has not been what they imagined high school would look like. But they, you know, they stuck with it. They persevered, and we're certainly proud of them and all of our students. They really, they, they've had a tough time of it. So with that, John or Liza, do you have anything for good and welfare? No? I will say a happy coming Father's Day. That will happen before we meet, to all the dads out there in Wellington. And if nothing else, I will make a motion to adjourn at 7:13.
I'll second.
Seconded by John. This is a non-debatable matter. All those in favor?
Hi.
My motion carries. I thank you. Have a good night.
Good night, everyone.